And we're live.
I'd like to call to order the Town of McCandless Business Meeting for May the 11th, 2020. We on our agenda, it said we were having an executive session at 7:15 due to technical difficulties. We were not able to do that, but we are planning on doing that following this meeting. And it will be to discuss a litigation matter. Now we would like to have the invocation and leaving of the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Powers.
Lord, you guide and govern everything with order and love. Bless this council and please fill us with the spirit of goodness so we may always act according to your will. And our decisions may be for the greater good of all the people that we serve. Please join me in Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. Under God. With liberty and justice for all.
All right. Announcements. Number one, I would like to thank everyone that participated in the food share. We had 180 vehicles come through and four home deliveries. And the remainder of the food that we had, we took to the North Hills Community Outreach. And we had such a great response and had just so many citizens help out. And it was a really, I think it went very well. I think we were able to help a lot of people. So I wanted to let you know how that went and thank everyone that participated in that. I wanted to also let everyone know that all the town committees, boards and authorities are going to be meeting by Zoom this month. Trying to get up and running again. And Oh, I also wanted to remind people that the last day is May 26th to apply for your mail in election ballots. Okay. I don't have any seminars or conferences right now. So we need to discuss the county proposal for polling places consolidation. Bob, do you want to let everybody know what the county is up to?
We were contacted by County Election Department that the intention for this primary election is to consolidate all polling places for into one location for each community. The intent then for McCandless would be that the seven wards would all vote in one location. We have been discussing possible locations with the county and we are doing our best to cooperate with them. They're looking at a number of different locations and at this point I'm not aware that they have settled on any particular location. But my last conversation with them, I had the impression that it may well not be at the town hall or town public works garage. So they must be looking at a few other places, but just anecdotal comment here in talking with other managers from communities that have a number of different polling districts or wards like we do. They proposed or asked the County Elections Department if they could at least have two different locations to avoid long lines or potential backups and having people too close to one another. And the indication is that there is only going to be one location. So at this point, that's really all I know. Any questions that I may or may not be able to answer at this point?
We're just letting everybody know about the county's plan to consolidate this. And this is supposed to be part of their social distancing to help protect poll workers and to keep they're really, really pushing for the mail in ballot. So because as you can see with one polling place, we could have some really long lines. So and then we have to maintain the social distancing in the wherever that polling place is going to be. So they're really encouraging people to get the mail in ballot. And like I said, that the deadline on that is May 26th.
I thought that's when they're due though.
I thought that was the last day to
To submit them to have them mailed in?
I thought that was the last day to ask for mail in ballot. Does anybody know?
I'm trying to pull that up right now because I applied for one. I just don't see it.
If you didn't apply until the 26th, wouldn't it be kind of pushing the timeline since the election is on the second?
Right.
That's why I'm saying they're due. I thought they're due around the 26th or 20th, not you can't request them. Let me look up the last chance.
Yeah, I am on the county website right now. So just going to pop in here. It says that your application for the mail in absentee ballot must be received by 5:00 PM on May 26th, 2022. Election.
Right, right. And that's, that's your ballot.
Yeah, so if they're going to request it, they need to request it now.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other comment, any other comments about that at all?
Just, I wanted to also read off here that voted ballots must be received by the Elections Division by 8:00 PM on June 2nd to be counted. So that's all the dates.
Just, just to be clear, guys, you can request until May 26th. That's just request and then they'll mail you the ballot. Your ballot has to be postmarked June 2nd.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
I had something to say postmarked by the 26th, okay.
No, I don't, I don't think it is. I think you have to the 22nd to ask for it, but you are, it does make it tight. You're right, but yeah, 26th is they like to request.
And, and for the, for the voted ballots, the way that they put it was that they have to be received by 8:00 PM on June 2nd. So if they're postmarked, but they're received June 3rd, it doesn't seem like there's any guarantee they would be counted.
Mr. Grimm, perhaps we can repost something on the town website and on the Facebook page that's crystal clear in what the procedure is. So I feel like we're, we're trying to sort it out. I don't want to confuse anyone.
Okay, we will do that.
Okay, and this is Joanne. Can the ballots be mailed in before the second? Would they accept them?
Yes.
Yeah, a lot of people already mailed theirs in.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That was, that's the deadline.
Okay.
All right, anything else on that? Is there a, all right, moving on. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of council's meeting from April 27th, 2020?
This is Angela Woods, so moved.
Okay.
Joanne Powers, second.
Okay. Are there any changes that need to be made to the minutes or anything, anyone needs to add? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor are of accepting the minutes as submitted, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the minutes are accepted. This is the time when agenda items may be commented on by the public.
Okay, so we, we have seven total signed up for a public comment today. The first one was Brian Danley. So Brian, I'm hoping you're ready. I am going to unmute you in three, two, one, and turn your video on.
Okay, hey, everybody. Thanks for letting me speak again. You know, basically I'm, I just wanted to speak again just to make sure that the rest of the ward representatives are, you know, continue to be aware of what's happening down here in our ward, you know, Ward 2. You know, a couple of things I want to make clear. One is I'm not against developing property and I understand that, you know, if a property owner owns a chunk of land, they deserve the right to sell it, even if it is to a developer. You know, as much as we'd all prefer that they wouldn't, but I do, you know, want to stress that I think you know, I want everybody to understand that, that it should be done responsibly, I guess. You know, and this isn't just, just, my comment isn't just to McCandless, it's to, again, the other municipalities around us. Because as we all know, eventually their water, just for example, in Pine ends up making its way down to all of us. So, you know, I'm reaching out to you guys again. I know Bob and a few other folks on the line. You know, they're trying to work with some of these municipalities. You know, I'm just asking again if you can continue to work with them. I've been making phone calls, particularly to Pine Township and talking to them. They haven't been very responsive and really haven't. I'm making some headway with them, but I think that if it comes from you guys, from Angela, from Bob, et cetera, from the rest of you folks on council, I think it'll hold a lot more weight than just one guy like me or a few of us that live, you know, in a different township complaining that their storm waters affecting us adversely. Another thing I want to mention too, and this is something, you know, again, it's not just specific to McCandless, it's to all the townships. But there's a reason why certain ordinances are put in place and township shouldn't be, should not allow for those ordinances to be adjusted. You know, or granted variances, for example, just to benefit the builder. I'm seeing that again in Pine Township. I know McCandless does it too, you know, allows for these variances. And really all that that does is benefit the builder. It doesn't benefit the rest of us residents who have been here, you know, for, for a period of time. An example, that's over engineering one piece of the property that they're developing. So they don't have to control any of the water on the other half. I mean, essentially what that does is that that continues to flood us. And what we're seeing is we're ending up with a number of manmade floodplains within, you know, McCandless Township now due to some of this irresponsible development. You know, the primary concern for the townships and our officials, so again, not just the townships, but at a county level, state level, et cetera, should be the residents, not the builders. You know, I think that that needs cleaned up a bit and we need to continue to stress that. And I've, and I've been trying to, again, with the, you know, the state and the regulatory bodies. But again, I, I, I need, we need help from you guys to do that. Another thing too, I hear a lot whenever I'm talking to the townships and regulatory bodies is, well, we're, we're, you know, they're adhering to the minimum standard. I mean, you know, and that, that doesn't hold any weight. I mean, we all know that the minimum standards aren't working. We all know it's failing us. It's been failing for 30 plus years and it just continues to get worse. So I mean, if, if everybody agrees that the minimum standards that are in place aren't sufficient, it's, it's within our right to expect more and we should expect more and we should be doing more and the townships need to be doing more for us. You know, I, I know engineers are looking at the calculations and all that stuff. And I'll be honest, I mean, we don't need an engineer to come in and I get it, you guys are doing that to cover yourselves, just like the rest of the townships are. But I mean, the best evidence is typically an eyewitness in anything. And we had 100 eyewitnesses at the McCandless Township meeting held by the ACCD. Our Facebook page now has 100, I don't know what it is, 10 or 20 members just that signed up in just, I think, a week's time. You know, these are all eyewitnesses telling us that things aren't passing the eye test. So we, you know, we don't need an engineer to tell us what's happening. We know what's happening. And again, you know, we're ending up with manmade flood, floodplains. I know poor guy Brandon, he probably has it worse than any of us down on 55 Pine Creek Road. I played baseball at Vestal my whole life growing up and, and that never flooded. Now, now Vestal Field floods. Brandon's house, that, that house never flooded like it, like it does now. My house has been here, as I've told you guys, probably at nauseam for over 100 years and it never flooded like this.
Not even during hurricane. I'm sorry to interrupt you again, but your, your five minutes are up and we have several other constituents that, that
All right, I'm guessing some of them will, yeah, they'll probably leave off where I, or pick up where I left off, so thanks.
We appreciate your comments. Thank you so much.
Okay, next we've got John Parker at 906 Whitley Drive. We also have following that Jenna Parker. They're both on the same screen, so I'm not sure if, if both of you were making a comment together or two separate ones. But either way, I'm going to turn the mic on for John first, if it's two separate ones in three, two, one.
Hi, hopefully I did that correctly. I'm John Parker. My family and I live at 906 Whitley Drive in McCandless. One of our neighbors contacted us just about a week and a half ago to let us know that council was considering adding a stop sign at the bottom of Whitley at the intersection of Aldenford. That's on the agenda. I think it's, it's one of the items on the agenda this evening. I emailed everybody this week, so I won't repeat what I put in that email. Just thank you to many of you who responded. And I was impressed with the responsiveness of council just in general. So I hope that when you see this item on the agenda tonight, you'll vote in favor of it. Our family lives at the top of Whitley Drive and the stop sign would be about two thirds down Whitley Drive. We've lived here since 2007. It's, this is the first home that my wife and I purchased and hopefully the only one. And since then, we've had three children. Our children are 11, nine and seven years old. Jenna, my daughter, signed up to speak next. And we just have noticed over, over the years, an increasing amount of traffic and more than that, an increasing amount of irresponsible driving and speeding. And I don't know if that's attributed to the development of McCandless Crossing. I don't know if that's just people finding different ways to work. I suspect a lot of the traffic is using our roads as a cut through to pass event. I, I wrote to my councilperson this week that the only thing I've ever done about it is yell at people when they drive by too fast, which hasn't been, I mean, maybe it's been effective for them. It certainly isn't systemically effective, but I was really happy to hear that council's considering adding that stop sign. So I hope that you'll support that. And then I hope further that we'll be able to find other ways to deal with the, the traffic that's driving too quickly through our streets. I appreciate having seen an increased police presence in the streets on Whitley and the nearby roads as well. Although I'm sure they have better things they could do with, with their time than sit and wait for speeders. I think there are other opportunities to add a stop sign at the top of the hill. I would support any and all intervention in terms of the traffic that's driving through this area. Whether that's increased police presence up through speed bumps, which I know are not popular with plow drivers. But I know that those, anything that we can do to add signage to communicate to drivers that there are children and families who want this to be a neighborhood rather than a throughway for vehicles. So I hope that you'll support that agenda item this evening. And certainly would be happy to work further on anything that we can do as a neighborhood to make sure that our roads are safe for our children to play near, to ride their bikes on, for us to walk our, our pets and walk with our families around and not be concerned that it's a dangerous situation for our families. So I don't know if that's even close to five minutes. My daughter would like to speak as well, so I can bail and pass it to her if it's better for all of you for her just to step in.
She gets her own whole five minutes.
She, she may use it all, I don't know. Okay, great, that's it for me.
All right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jenna Parker. I'm 11 years old and I also live at 906 Whitley Drive. And ever since I was pretty much able to walk, my parents have made it clear that the road was not a safe place for us to be by. And as I got older, I started to worry about my brothers in that sense and want more freedom to ride around the neighborhood. And me and my brothers like to play on things like our scooters and our bikes. And we really like to ride them around wherever we can. And then this year, my brother's got some new friends in the neighborhood who moved here. And they're two and four years younger than me. And I noticed how they had less traffic on their roads, so their parents were like letting them ride their bikes and stuff around. So when they ride to the house, all I'm thinking is like, I am two and four years older than these kids and still since of the traffic on our street, I can't really have the same freedoms as them. And so I think that anything that we can do to slow down the speeding will help make the roads safer for us and will and will make it safer for everybody really. And thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
All right, thank you very much. Going to mute you guys now. And next up, we have got, ooh, hope I say this name right. I apologize in advance if I get it wrong. Kaitlyn Manjerevich, Manjerevich perhaps, from 938 Whitley Drive. Kaitlyn, I'm going to unmute you in three, two, one.
Hi, everyone. You did a really great job with the last name is Manjerevich, so thank you. Can you all see me? Can you hear me? Okay, good. I'll be brief. I think Jonathan and Jenna did a great job, so thank you both for your comments. You've all heard from my husband, Jason Manjerevich, earlier, I guess it was last week. He sent everyone on the council an email just really detailing the issues that we've been having here on our street. We're much newer to the neighborhood than the Parkers are. We moved in two years ago, right before the birth of our son. And we're now expecting another one. So we're really excited about that, but that definitely has also been a worry of ours. Our son is two years old now. And so we, like Jenna has said, since he's been walking, have really had to be very careful with letting him know that the street is very dangerous. Not something that we really knew as soon as we moved into the house, but something that we've noticed even in the two years that we've been here, that's become even more of a problem. The police have documented that this is a problem. And we think that it would be anything that you guys can do that you can support to get the, the traffic coming off of Babcock significantly lower would be awesome. The stop sign would be right off of that. So just, you know, an opportunity to show drivers that this is a neighborhood, please slow down would be really great and we would definitely appreciate that. And again, like Jonathan said, anything that you need from us in support of controlling some of the speeding and irresponsible driving in the neighborhood, we're happy to do. So I know we mentioned speed bumps and how that's not necessarily the most popular choice. But the stop sign definitely seems like a great first option to help, to help this problem. And that's all that I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
All right. Let's see, next up, we've got Richard Manjery, if I said that one right, at 330 Richard Road. As soon as I find you here, I'll mute you. There we are.
Hello, how is everyone today? Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Fantastic. It's kind of neat seeing, this is my first foray into local politics and I like to see it in action. Pretty cool. I would like to second the motion for the stop sign on Whitney. And then also, and maybe they can back our cause as well. I'm one of the co-founders of McCandless Families for Better Storm Water Management. And we have, as Brian has said, we've grown over 100 members strong in a very short period of time. And we're growing fast and the, the point is, I guess, we really just can't stop until we're able to preserve the safety of our land and the safety of our families down here. So I think we should start there, working together with you guys, the town council members, the other community members, the other municipalities, and just continue to raise awareness. Because as of right now, during a bad rain, I, me and the four families that live on my road cannot get out or, or emergency vehicles cannot get in. I think, I think anyone living next to a stream would tell, or a creek will tell you that, you know, they're far too raging, far too rapid at this time due to overdevelopment and poor stormwater management practices. Wexford Station, although, is maybe the proverbial camel, the straw that broke the camel's back. It's just a piece of the puzzle that we have to fix. But the, the system is in failure and it's only a matter of time before more property is lost or somebody gets hurt. So we really leaning on you guys as our representatives and we have a tremendous amount of respect for your positions that you have and your time. That's why I'm not even going to use my full five minutes, but I would like to say that maybe as a, a place to start would be to get the council members, the ACCD and the DEP all in a room at one time, so we can stop pointing fingers at one another. May words give way to action. I'll say that again, may words give way to action. Thank you very much and have a great evening.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next up, we have got Lauren Truitt. And, all right. You are unmuted.
Hi, my name's Lauren Truitt. I'm a student at Ingamar Middle School and I'm interested in raising chickens with my family. I know that Mr. Grimm showed a proposal in September and I was wondering the status of that proposal and here to lend my support.
I can speak to that and that is, that went to a subcommittee from the Planning Commission and, and then COVID came and it actually got a little pushed back. But at the last Planning Commission meeting, which was last week, I did ask that committee to please meet again and to bring that forward. So my, I am under this understanding that that will come, the Planning Commission meets again the first week in May. That will come to the Planning Committee from the Subcommittee and hopefully they will approve it and it will come to council and that will be a public discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Did you have any more comment?
Um, nope, that's all.
Okay.
Expect like in June or July?
I hope May.
You mean June, because we already had the May meeting.
I do mean June. I do mean June. Yes, thank you. Yeah, I'm still
I'll take another week of May though, as long as it doesn't snow again.
Not with more snow, you know.
All right. This is our last person signed up to comment. We have got Brandon Schweiger at 55 Pine Creek Road. Let me find you here, unmuting in three, two, one.
Hello?
Hello?
Uh, yeah, this is Brandon Schweiger. Sorry, I'm having some technical difficulty here. So here we go.
We can hear you.
Oh, I can see you guys now. It's, uh, okay, I got you guys. Down at 55 Pine Creek. Like Brian had said with the flooding and all the, you know, the storm drains and I've been in contact with Bob back and forth. And he said he has contacted and had maybe a breakthrough with Pima. With all the other problems, I know that there's a lot of people on the Facebook page that we With all the other problems, I know that there's a lot of people on the uh, Facebook page that we've joined. And like others have said earlier, um, the numbers are stronger. You know, I think the page will continue to get stronger as we go forward with all this. But having your guys' backing uh, would increase our numbers. I know with COVID going on, a lot of the stuff got put on hold. But uh, as most would say, yeah, COVID's here, but the rain's still coming. And I know a lot of people were out of work, and uh, that caused a lot of stoppage on work sites. That being said, with, I guess you could say with, rain season is fastly approaching. And uh, there's multiple families that are affected by storm waters. And getting to talk to other people like upstream from us, and you know, people telling us that it, it's never flooded this bad. And like the gentleman said about the uh, field behind us, never used to flood, and now it does. Something's, something's gotta change. Uh, I, I know there, you know, you can't move waterways or um, dredging the creeks or, you know, diverting water. Retention ponds, anything of that nature, you know, I think would be, you know, a huge success for a lot of places. It's just there's, there's so much development going on. It's, you know, to me, it's, it's more of, you know, it's a money thing, you know, more development means more money. But it's putting the um, you know, the people who live in these townships, the ones that are suffering from it while other things being built are, you know, thriving. You know, it's, it's never worrying about the people downstream or next to a creek. Or if we build this big, you know, sufficient place, and it's gonna make all this money. But the people who live in this community and other communities who are affected by all the runoff, i- it's, it's the problem. And I hope that uh, we continue to push forward with our Facebook page and get more and more people to sign up for that. And like I said, uh, having you guys back us would, you know, stick together right now, it's a tough time. Support one another. And uh, I look forward to hearing some uh, updates on everything and everyone who is dealing with the floodwaters and, you know, clogged drains. I, I, I really hope that, you know, people can be, you know, helped through this difficult time. And uh, we are, to anyone who is flooding and having troubles and, you know, dealing with what we're dealing with, you know, everybody knows where we live. Need help, we're willing to help, as most of you have helped us. And uh, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Right, that is everyone that we've got signed up for tonight.
If there's anyone that has additional comments that you would like uh, council to hear, please, you can send them to town administration, or you can send us to, us individually. But we'd be glad to hear your comments. Um, reports of committees, uh, Finance and Personnel Committee.
Yes, this is Chuck Mazer. Uh, number one is review the check listing, number five, dated April one through April thirty, year two, twenty twenty, totaling one million thirty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-four cents, as submitted to each member of council and posted on the Bolton Board and the town website. Are there any questions or comments from council? If none, then I'll go, I'll go to, will, will we have a motion to approve this?
I have a question, or I actually have a comment, please.
Uh, who's speaking, please?
Trish Clonan.
Trish?
Trish.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Uh, I just wanted to say, I, I, that uh, that the, it was added to have the COVID nineteen precaution description in the checklisting. Uh, because I am curious to see how um, these costs play out, if they're one-time costs, or if they're going to be something we need to account for um, for the next couple of months, years in the future. So thank you for making sure that that was separated out.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Then item number two, review the monthly financial summary and dashboard report. Tricia?
I have submitted the report to council. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay. Item number three, discuss resolution number eight. Is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of McCannus, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the extension of the face payment deadline for twenty twenty real estate taxes by waiving fees and penalties for twenty twenty real estate taxes paid in full on or before December thirty-one, twenty twenty.
Um, this is just following suit what um, a lot of other places are doing. And that is, um, you still get your discount by paying your um, taxes before the date, but it just eliminates penalties or late fees, those additional times, just to give some people that are having some hard times a little extra time, so they don't get any penalties, is, is what this is.
In matter of present, that's correct.
Is it, is it uh, right to have a motion to this effect at this point? Or do we need further discussion?
Does anyone else have any discussion? Okay.
Any questions?
Yeah, I think you could call for the motion, Chuck, if you'd like to make the motion.
Okay. I'll make the motion, do we accept resolution number eight? Is there a second?
Trish Clonan, a second?
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Okay, all those, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, item number four, discuss budget revisions for budget year twenty twenty. I defer to Tricia and Bob for that.
Okay, and I'll, I'll start out, and Tricia can chime in anytime that she feels that she needs to. For the last month or so, Trish and I have been following revenue cycles, looking at potential issues that we may have with revenue. And essentially, what we're seeing over the last six weeks, uh, in, in looking at what other communities are considering, what some of the um, the groups that we belong to are considering. We feel that, we took a look back at the second quarter of twenty nineteen for revenues that were generated. And we felt that there would be, you know, somewhere between a seventeen and twenty-five percent decrease in, in certain revenues, which we have identified, as well as reductions in user fees, recreation fees. And anticipating worst-case scenario that we would not be able to hold Community Day, what those donations and fees might include. And at this point, we are estimating a reduction of just over a million dollars in revenue. We think that earned income tax will be impacted, realis, realty transfer tax will be impacted. In a best-case scenario, we may just divert realty transfer tax to later in the year. A local services tax will be impacted, and business privilege tax would also be impacted. In part, that will be a timing issue. And other ways, not knowing what businesses may or may not uh, continue to operate as a result of this virus. We, we took a very conservative approach as we were looking at these potential impacts. We then took a hard look at the budget. We looked at positions that were vacant, that uh, we would recommend not filling at this point. Number of positions in the police department, planned hires um, throughout the town, purchases such as vehicles that we would not purchase, some capital expense that we would not want to incur. That we felt that we could push off until twenty twenty-one or beyond. Probably one of the hardest uh, decisions at this point. This also includes not holding Community Day. And um, then we, we made some adjustments with Mark's help on the road paving program. We adjusted some of the streets around so that we would not have some of the expense that we would with some other streets. And um, short-term, we've eliminated the Harmony Trail and community welcome signs that we had planned. Happy to talk at length about, or in more detail about any of the things that uh, you had in front of you. This is unprecedented time that we're in. This is the first time that I personally, in a lot of years of doing this, have had to, to face this kind of a budget adjustment in the middle of the year. But uh, we're, we're doing what we can in order to be able to preserve positions, keep people working here, and keeping services going as the residents have come to expect.
This is Joanne Power.
Go ahead, Joanne.
I agree with you as far as our not having Community Day this year. I think there are too many people having problems. And because of our problem as far as having the reduction in income, I don't think that it is something that we should spend the money on, and we should just resume it next year.
I, I, I agree with that. It's very disappointing. I know everyone looks forward to it, but I, I do agree with uh, Joanne and Bob.
I agree too. And I was gonna ask, when are, do we know for like deposits? Is there, usually in contracts, there's a certain date we'd have to have, like something, you know, what was the last date we could like bail on?
We've managed to not put any real deposits down at this point. Not knowing what was going to happen. The, the good part about all of this as it relates to Community Days is the simple fact that it was, it got harder and harder to get hold of people just because of uh, everybody being off, and, and just a little bit harder to reach. I just wanna say from a public standpoint, so that the, the public understands that this is not just a decision, a financial decision. We received guidance today um, through the Pennsylvania Parks and Recreation Society. They've done an analysis of the proposed reopening plan from the governor, the, the red, yellow, green phases. And it appears that even if the town and Allegheny County are able to go into a green phase of the reopening plan, that most likely will limit gatherings to those of one hundred or less. So if we're lucky enough to get to a green phase, uh, by the time Community Days would roll around, we would not be able to comply with that green phase to for a simple matter that we would have more than one hundred gather, together. So this, this is a, a safety issue as well as a financial.
I know, for me, the only one part that bothered me on this that I would not wanna see a skip, if there's a way to be able to do it, was the um, the, the volunteer fire department's physicals. Kind of wish, I, I mean, if we could, I'd like to keep that out of this list.
Well, and I spoke, I spoke to Marshall Stack about that before we included it on the list. And the intent was this to become an annual um, physical that the firefighters would have. His anticipation would be that it would be something that would occur at the beginning of each year, whether that be, uh, let's say in the first quarter of each year. His feeling was that, at this point, if we were going to continue that plan to have the physicals in the first quarter of each year, that would be holding these uh, physicals of about six months apart. And he wasn't sure that that made a lot of sense.
Yeah.
So we included it because of that logic.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. I just know how much, what, we've saved at least three lives already by doing this. I hate.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's a, it's a tough call. I mean, all of these things are tough calls.
And we've even had, and obviously, because we've even had a steering committee meeting to be able to ask them, hey, what's your feedback? But, okay.
Yeah, so that, that, that was why it was included, because I had that conversation with him, and he felt that um, in his mind, we could wait until the, the beginning of next year to hold, to hold these.
This is Chuck Mazer. I agree that we have, the only responsible decision would be to cancel that Community Days, unfortunately. I've also found out today that uh, the new, uh, the green, the green, whatever it's called, green situation with the fields and all, uh, means that fields will not be open until June fifteenth. So that's gonna hurt a lot of the baseball and softball in the area. Also, I don't think they've decided what they're gonna do yet, but that's another, another issue. And it's just gonna be too tight to, to do that and have tournaments a couple of weeks later. I had another question, uh, this reduction. I've heard before that our road program, paving program is on an every ten-year cycle. What does this do to that cycle?
It allows us to continue in the cycle that we had hoped to be able to continue in. What we've done is just adjusted the, the overall program down by about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars by choosing or replacing Cumberland Road up by Passover Hospital with a couple of other streets of equal quantities in terms of square yards, but needing less base repair. So we brought the cost of our base repair program down for this year, but we're going to be able to pave the same number of streets. So we'll, we'll stick to our game plan.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
This is Angela Woods. For the sake of clarity, I just wanted to, to ask, Mr. Grimm, we're not on a ten-year paving cycle, are we?
No, we're.
No.
Closer to twenty. We'd like to get back down closer to fifteen. It had been a fifteen-year cycle. It's creeped up to around twenty just because of the cost of materials, the overall cost of the programs. But uh, we don't want to, to let it get beyond twenty. So this, this keeps us, this keeps us in that, that range.
Yeah, and just one more comment on the, the budget proposals. I appreciate um, the work that you both have put into this. And I appreciate that it protects the, our employees, you know, which is a big part of our, how our community works and runs. Um, I agree with um, Councilwoman Schweiger that it was tough for me to see the, uh, don't reimburse the volunteer firefighters for the physicals. It sounds more like what we're doing is just delaying that, not, not giving up on the program, just changing the timeline.
You're very correct.
I appreciate the preemptive budgeting and the estimates of what the cost will be. Nobody really knows what they're gonna be, but I really appreciate the educated um, guesswork on this and the calculations associated with this from RJ and Bob, to give us something to start dealing with sooner than later, so that, um, hopefully, we don't end up at the end of the year and with more surprises than, than we would like to have. Are there any other comments or questions on this? This would, if everyone's happy with this, then this would, this could turn into a motion tonight.
Yeah, so we'll have to go through the, the process for. Yeah, so we'll have to go through the process for a budget amendment. So we would, we would proceed at the next meeting to adopt, towards adoption of that.
Oh, okay. Oh, so we would make a motion for this tonight, then?
No, no ma'am.
Okay, okay. All right. I'm sorry. I thought we, tonight we could do that. Okay. Next week. Next, yes, next week. Is that all for finance and personnel?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Zoning Committee. RJ did a very nice update on the, oh, you know what? And I misspoke. I said RJ did this budget balancing. It wasn't. That was Trish that did this. Excuse me, I misspoke ahead of myself. But on the zoning report, that was the one that RJ put together, a nice summary for everyone that's in your folder about the ordinances that are coming before the, the planning commission. Are there any questions on those? All right. Public Safety Committee.
So there was no zoning report. Okay. Chief's report. Ryan, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can. Ryan, you ready for your video to be on, or do you want it off today?
I'm good either way.
Okay, there you go.
Members of council, you have the chief's report. If you have any questions, I'll take them at this time.
Councilwoman Clunin. Hawk, I'm curious to know if you and your officers feel like you are, have enough access to the PPE that you need to work with our residents and save as well. I just wanted to make sure you.
It's a challenge, Tricia, as you can imagine. But we do at the moment have enough stock to keep us running. If it continues long-term, obviously, we're gonna have to look to try to find other sources. But, but at the moment, we do have the masks and the cleaning supplies to get us through. We keep going through emergency, or the Allegheny County Emergency Services to obtain masks, because we need them and such. But they have been advised to give priority to, obviously, to hospitals and the medics. So while it's a challenge, we do have them at this time.
And Ms. Clunin, we want to make council aware that we also purchased about 150 additional N95 masks through a cooperative purchase that the municipalities and the North Hills Cog went together on. So we, we were able to secure some additional ones recently.
Ryan, do you want to tell them about your busy day you guys had yesterday? Can I give them an update since things have changed a little bit over the last eight weeks?
You're referencing the, the near exposure?
Oh, no, 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 no. Just what, so Sergeant Madden was telling me today about how things were kind of crazy and we're just looking at the last past eight weeks, how things have been really slow and quiet. And then yesterday, I think people are starting to get antsy at home and we're starting to see some issues arise.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks for the reminder. We, we did have, that Sergeant Madden worked the 3 to 11 shift yesterday and he advised me that for him, it's been the busiest shift he's had in a couple of months or better. So there seems to be an uptick in activity around the town. He said that he, it is concerning to him because it seems that folks are on edge. You know, as you can imagine with the whole COVID-19 situation. The calls appear to be, a lot of them are obviously related to that and people's frustrations at the sheltering in place and whatnot. We have some neighbor disputes, an uptick in that and as well as domestics, some retail thefts. But we are seeing the call volume raise a little bit recently.
Thanks. So any other questions, comments? No? Okay. So next, let's review the request for the installation of a stop sign at the intersection of Whitley Drive and Alden Ford Drive. Who wants to? Questions, comments?
This is Angela Woods. I can kick off the conversation if you don't mind. Some residents from Ward 5, Whitley and Alden Ford are both in Ward 5, reached out to me recently to let me know that speeding on Whitley was a concern. They had also reached out to the police department earlier and the police department set up some traffic monitoring equipment and were able to get a count of the volume of cars, speed of cars, times a day. A lot of details in that information. I appreciate that, Chief Hawk.
Yes, ma'am.
And what they found was that there was some increased volume of traffic at certain times of the day and some really excessive speeding. So certainly the, the reports from the people in the neighborhood were founded and they were, they were, a lot of them pretty accurately reflected what the police report detailed. So I've actually had six households on that street reach out to me. Hopefully, they've gotten, you know, to a lot of you as well. And I fully support anything we can do to slow down traffic on that road. I went and took a look at it. It looks like we're not just talking about one stop sign. We would need to have two, one going in each direction on Whitley where Alden Ford enters. Is that what you were thinking, Chief Hawk?
Well, I spoke with Superintendent of Public Works, Mark Sabina, Ms. Woods. And I know that it would certainly seem to slow traffic. I think that there are, and he could speak to this better than I. There are certain what they call warrants that that street would need to meet in order for, I guess, the, maybe the state to allow us to put the stop signs there. There may be some hurdles for us to clear, if at all possible, before they were to be placed. And like I said, Mark could probably speak to that a little bit better if he's, if he's available.
I'm using Mark just in case.
Angela, this is Joanne. I also had some calls from those people, even though it wasn't in my ward. I had calls from them with their concerns about the speeding.
Yeah, Councilwoman Clunin here. I, you know, I think it's very important that as a council, don't, you know, we have to be careful. Not every resident may want a different kind of traffic pattern in front of their home. But I don't think this is the situation from the folks on Whitley Drive. When Whitley Drive was created, there was no McCandless Crossing and the other traffic patterns go into that neighborhood. And the other thing is, something we don't have much control over is all the Google Ways apps on our phones that we're using, even if it is residential street. I know very often my, my navigation apps will send me into neighborhoods that say specifically for residential only. And I think that's probably, that's what happened because that used to be a shortcut that only folks that grew up around here knew about. Now everybody knows about it because of these apps.
Mark, can you tell us what those hurdles are with the state to get that sign in?
I could give you what the, what the requirements are basically. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
In 1978, the legislature changed the requirements on, on stop signs. And they now require that a traffic study be done on any location, pretty much for any sign that's a regulatory sign. The stop sign, the speed limit sign, yield signs, all those kinds, anything that's a regulatory sign that the police can issue a citation for neglect to follow what that sign recommends that you do. In the case of a stop sign, the number one warrant, of course, is, is traffic accidents, which between Chief Hawk and I, there are no indication that there's, there's been any accidents at the intersection of Alden Ford and Whitley Drive. The second indication is for the volume of traffic. And those volumes are on local roads excessive, but they are the volumes that the state requires. And it's like a minimum of 800 cars per hour with, with the intersection, with the two intersecting roads, which clearly is not going to happen at Whitley and Alden Ford. Lastly, would be a conflict of right of way. In other words, there's, there's some issue there that's creating a difficulty with drivers to understand who has the right of way at that intersection. The site distance at that intersection is excellent. It's, it's well in excess of the requirements of the traffic and engineering study, which would pretty much eliminate that warrant. The, the last specific thing that's in there is that you are not permitted to use stop signs to control speed. With those thoughts in mind, if stop signs are installed and they don't meet those warrants, if, if an accident occurs there, the town would be liable for whatever the outcome of that accident. And if you were to appear before the district judge because you got a citation, he would probably have to dismiss that citation because signs are not there according to warrants that are set up by the state. And the, the studies that the police department did with their traffic speed detection devices indicate that, that while there is a perception of a speeding problem on the streets, and certainly there is a percentage of cars that are going to, to be found, that they found exceeded the speed limit to the point where they could have given a citation. Chief Hawk could probably correct me, but I think that was something like less than 3% of the traffic that, that they counted with their units that exceeded the, the, the speed limit to the point where they could be given a ticket. Generally, the 85th percentile speed, which is what the state requires us to look at whenever we consider any kind of a traffic study. The 85th percentile speed was around 26 miles an hour, which means that 85% of the vehicles that, that were counted on that road were only doing about one mile an hour over the posted speed limit. Again, with, with the warrants that we have to meet, there's no requirement there for anything other than enforcement of those vehicles that exceeded the, the 11 miles an hour, which again, is something that the legislature requires that the police department do. And the chances that there's going to be an officer there when one of those 1 and 1/2% of vehicles exceeds the speed limit is probably pretty slim. They certainly have increased our patrols over there, which is great. And I'm sure when they're there, everybody slows down at a basis speed limit. When the police are not there, people are going to do what people do. And, and the sign is only as good as those that read it and pay attention to it. So I would have to suggest that while we can continue and do a further traffic study over there, right now, today, I can't recommend to council that you install stop signs on that road. Perhaps one other thing to consider, the distance between Alden Ford Drive and Babcock Boulevard is not very long. It's maybe 200 feet at the best. If in fact, a lot of this traffic is coming out of Passover Hospital, if, if there were to be a stop sign installed on Whitley at Alden Ford for traffic coming in off of Babcock Boulevard, there's a potential that you could back traffic up out onto Babcock Boulevard, which would be less safe than the occasional person who is speeding through the plan. And it's also been found through national studies that when people have to stop at stop signs like that, they tend to go faster when they leave them because they're irritated that they had to stop. So those are just some tidbits that I can throw out there at you.
Do we know?
I'll be happy to answer them.
Well, is there a certain time of day that these speeders, that this is occurring, like 3 o'clock, 5 o'clock, or is it just random?
There's, what I saw on the reports that Chief Hawk had, there, there were a couple of vehicles that were around 41 miles an hour that were, I believe, between 2 and 4 o'clock. There were a couple of other ones that were at various other times of day. And the 2 to 4 o'clock period would kind of fit in with shift change at the hospital. Clearly, since school's out, it's not, it's not kids leaving school trying to rush from one place to another. So yeah, from the, the 2 to 4 o'clock period, that would probably be the prime time, so to speak. If you wanted to have an officer sit over there and, and try to clock some cars as they come through.
I think 2 to 4 o'clock during a regular school year would also be the time when the, the kids are starting to go out and, you know, come home from school and go out to play. And I understand we have some state regulations that we need to work with, but this really sounds like a reactive approach, waiting for some accidents and some problems to happen when we, I, I feel like we need to do something that's going to be proactive. These, these neighborhoods aren't meant for, through traffic. They're, you know, we should be having neighborhoods where our kids can safely ride a bike and not have to be worried about, you know, getting hit by a car. To that end, Mark, what can we do on that road?
Well, as Chief Hawk and I talked the other day, this, this is, there's, as, as any of us stand out in front of our house and watch a car drive by, the perception is that that car is doing 30 or 40 or 50 miles an hour. From an enforcement standpoint, which is the main thing that, that it appears needs to take place over there, that would be more, as permitted, more stationary patrols, as they call them, from the police to monitor the speed and appear there at different times of the day and afternoon and evening, which, you know, once, once people don't know when there's going to be an officer sitting there, they're going to slow down a little bit. And there also are no VASCAR lines on any of the streets over there. So we, we could put some VASCAR lines on the streets, which the officers would need anyway in order to try to do enforcement.
Kim Zachary, is it possible, or what are the results that you all have seen of the local traffic only signs that I have seen around? Would something like that help? Is that something that's enforceable? That I've seen those signs some places?
Those, those are an advisory sign. There's really no enforcement available with those. And again, they're as good as the people that read the sign. If you, if you catch people from outside the area that are new to here, they're probably going to pay attention to that sign. If in fact, that traffic is, is folks coming, going from Passover Hospital, they already know that shortcut and local traffic only isn't going to stop them from continuing that practice.
This is, this is Joanne. One of my thoughts, and I, and I know this is not settling the problem, but I, I feel maybe that one of us or someone should maybe meet with those people there to let them know that there are certain situations that have to be followed with PennDOT before stop signs can be put up. It's not that, that municipality doesn't want to put the stop sign. So, you know, I, I think they don't understand those kinds of things. And I think it would help, not that it's going to alleviate the problem, but I certainly think it would help with their understanding that they don't think that we're just saying, no, we don't want a stop sign there. You know what I'm saying? I, I think just having someone explain to them what, you know, the rules that you just said.
How about a letter that we sent out to, to the people?
Yeah.
Sure, that'd be a good idea. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to get people to meet and we can't meet right now, but just explaining maybe some of these things. I,
See, I think that would be a good idea because I, I think, you know, if we just flatly say, no, we can't put a stop sign, they're not understanding why we can't do that. You can't just plop a stop sign down wherever you feel like it.
Right.
So. I know, I've been trying to plop, plop it down on grubs for a few years. I know.
Well, I just feel like we owe them an explanation of all of this.
Yeah. So Ryan, would you like to draft something and then we can send it out?
Certainly, if I may ask Mark to get involved with me so that he can help me with the warrant work, but we, we could put something together. warrant work, but we, we could put something together.
This is Angela Woods. Before we jump to this, we're not going to do anything because we can't do a stop sign kind of train of thought. I'm, I'm more interested to find out what we can do. Is there, do we, can we access a, a traffic engineer or have someone do a study and find out what the possible options are?
I'll pick that one.
Ryan, haven't you done? I'm sorry, go ahead.
The, the main options, the, the, the main options that would be available would be stronger or more frequent enforcement. Certainly, we could consult an outside engineer, but I have to tell you that they are probably going to come up with the same results or recommendations that I've already put out there for you to, to consider.
Mr. Graham, what it takes to get an outside person to look at this?
You know, I think we've, we've looked at some alternatives in the past with other areas, and I, I personally like the idea of looking at traffic calming alternatives, and I'm not talking about speed bumps here. But there, there may be some alternatives that I would like to at least have a conversation with traffic engineers about to see what their thoughts are. There are some creative approaches out there, and I think it makes sense to, to look at those. If we can, if we can help the folks out, you know, in a safe manner, I think we should.
I agree.
You know, if I may, I, as, as I'm, as I'm sitting here thinking about this, all, this is not a new problem over in that neighborhood, which is why 25 mile per hour is posted throughout that neighborhood now. This, this came up years ago, and we did look at some other alternatives years ago, and, and one of the alternatives that we came up with was to make Whitley Drive from Alden Ford out to Babcock a one-way street so that nobody could come in from Passover Hospital. And we looked at making, I forget what, there was another street over there that we looked at making a one-way street in the opposite direction to stop, again, to stop the traffic. And the, the resounding result of that was those one-way signs mean everybody. It's not just the traffic from Passover or the through traffic from someplace else. It's, it's even the folks that live on those streets, and they didn't want to hear about having their street turned into a one-way street. So we abandoned that idea. Now, that is something that if you bring a, an outside consultant in, that is going to be one of the recommendations that they look at, creating one-way streets on some of those streets to try to stop the flow from coming through there.
Do you know how long ago that was, that you guys looked at this?
Wow, I'd have to look back and see when we, when the ordinance was passed to put the 25 mile per hour speed limit on Alden Ford Drive, it was in that time period.
Okay. This is Angela Woods. I'd like to revisit that. I'd, I'd like to look at whatever alternatives, and I, I don't know what it takes, like, do we, if we need to vote or get a head nod, but if, I'd like to see a traffic engineer come in and assess that situation.
I can make a phone call tomorrow morning. It won't, it won't be an expensive proposition.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? No? Okay, that's it.
Public Works Committee.
The Public Works Activity Report was submitted in the packets. Mr. Sabina, do you have anything you wanted to add?
I do not. I apologize that it was a little late because of all the confusion with days and nights and everything. I was a little late in getting it submitted, but I'm glad that it made it in time for the packet for tonight.
Are there any questions or comments?
Trish Clunin, I would like to just comment and thank Mr. Sabina and all the, the folks who, from the Public Works Department for their efforts with our McCandless Cares and Shares. They were just fantastic and willing and happy to work with us and the residents of McCandless, so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Clunin, I was going to say the same thing, and I also wanted to thank the police department and the staff for their help in making that day very successful. If there are no further comments, then that concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you. Services Committee. Carolyn, you're going to be picking that up for Bill. You're muted. Carolyn's muted.
Gotcha.
Got it. So, do we have Dan on here? We need the Fire Marshal's report for the month of March 2020, permit report for April 2020.
Dan is not available tonight. He's helping his son celebrate his 17th birthday, so just, the, the report is in your packets. And if there's any questions, please get them to me. If I can't answer them, then I will be happy to have Marshall stack it back to you.
Okay. Questions, comments? Okay, next, Code Enforcement's violations complaint statistics report for the month of April 2020.
And that, that report is also in your packets, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Okay.
With all the people cooking, I just thought there'd be more fires. I don't know.
Actually, the, those call volumes have been down along with EMS, and I, no figure.
I thought it would be up, man, I just did.
Okay, next, review the proposed revisions to the July 25, 1977 Northland Public Library Intergovernmental Agreement between the Township of Ross, the Town of McCandless, the Borough of Franklin Park, the Township of Marshall, and Borough of Bradford Woods.
Joanne, you want me to handle it, or do you want to?
Well, go ahead with you, but then I, I, I would like to say that the library board, Amy has asked us to try to get each of our municipalities to vote on this this month so that that can be turned in. But go ahead, I, I'd like for you to give a little excerpt on it.
Okay, and I believe that Amy Steele is in the audience tonight. If, if she has anything to add, just feel free to throw something in chat if there's something that you need us to add.
Should I unmute Amy Steele?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And in February, the managers and some other representatives of the participating communities met to review the proposed language changes in the intergovernmental agreement between those communities to operate the library. We, we walked through the, the criteria for determining the contributions. And by and large, what we agreed to that day was changes in how the assessed value would be interpreted, assessed valuation of each community, when we would look at population estimates that are provided by the Pennsylvania State Census Data Center. We also looked in large part at circulation and usage, incorporating electronic circulation, which wasn't envisioned initially. We tried to come up with language that we hope can be interpreted long-term, not knowing what technology will allow us to be doing in the future, and did a few other little housekeeping items in terms of language regarding what hap, that is currently in the deed, what happens to the library property should the library or the property cease to be used for a library, and added to some other housekeeping language changes to, I think, to make things easier to understand moving forward. Looking at the percentages of uses, usage for McCandless, in looking at the, these different criteria resulted in very little impact. I asked Amy to do an evaluation of what the 2020 contribution would have been, given the, the updated criteria, and there was an adjustment of about $10,000 to $15,000 less that the town would be contributing, and that's offset by other communities that have had growth and that would be paying out a little bit more money. So Amy, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think, Mr. Graham, that you've summarized that very well. There are, this agreement has stood since, I believe, 1977, and this is the, only the second change that's been offered. The, the first change was when the, when Marshall Township joined into the authority, so they had to include language to include Marshall Township. So this is really the first substantive change, and as, as Bob said, this was prompted mostly to be able to include that electronic counts for circulation. Back in 1977, they just didn't envision eBooks and that kind of thing. So that, while we were in there adding that, we, we cleaned up a few of those other items that, that were mentioned, but...
Am I correct that this will increase our portion somewhat?
The numbers that we ran actually show a slight decrease for McCandless based on the 2020 estimates and statistics that we have. I can't see into the future for, you know, next year, but...
I thought it was just a little bit more, but min, very small amount, but less, okay, even better.
Yeah.
Amy, thank you for attending the meeting tonight.
You are very welcome.
Any other questions, comments? Nope. Okay, this concludes the Service Committee meeting.
Is this something that we want to vote on next week? Or I know it was mentioned that we want to, that the library would like to have this by the end of the month, or?
Yeah, I purposely did not work with Gavin on the necessary legislation, just in the event that we had to discuss any items on this. So we'll certainly prepare the necessary documents in order for the council to be able to take this under advisement.
So Amy, will that work out if we vote in the next meeting?
She was muted. Just turned her back on, sorry.
Yes, that, that would be fine. We actually need this to be done by the end of June would be our very last date, and I know the other municipalities are having their solicitors review this as well, so it, it probably is best to, you know, hold off just a, a little bit here to make sure. Wouldn't want another township to suggest a minor legal revision and then have to do it again.
Okay.
Right, and I think council is aware that as a intergovernmental cooperation agreement, this is required to be adopted by ordinance, so we will have to advertise that prior to voting on it. So I think, I think we'll be looking at June regardless.
Is that 30 days, Gavin, for that?
Uh, no, not 30 days. This is a Class C ordinance, so it's actually the, the most minimal advertising requirements.
Oh, good. Okay, so we got time.
Recreation Committee.
Trish Clunin, Recreation Committee, I wish I had something to share with you.
No recreating going on.
Well, the recreating is happening in the comfort of your own home right now.
No, no, no parties going on.
But just, and I do want to thank Mr. Graham for sending those guidelines today, the clarification on the parks. I'm curious if we could possibly include that as a link on our website. I think it's a, a nice one-stop shopping for guidance on the parks, if that's possible.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Is that all, Trish?
That's all, thank you.
Okay. Is there any unfinished business needs to come before council? All right, hearing none, then new business. As you know, we have a vacancy in Ward 2, and we need to talk about the process of filling that. Joanne, I believe that you were appointed, but what was, what, what did you, what was that process like? What did you all do?
Well, they, they came and talked to me at that point and said that there was, it was 45 days that someone had to be appointed. And I was interviewed, and then they voted, and then I was appointed. It was as simple as that.
Who interviewed you?
Council.
All of council at a public meeting?
Yes. Now, it, I'm thinking if it was a public meeting or if it was a committee meeting. No, it was in, it was in a smaller room, so it had to be a committee meeting.
Okay, but it was, it was a public meeting, though. I mean, any...
Oh, yes, yes. Oh, anybody could have come, yes, yes.
Okay, 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 okay. All right. Was it posted at all?
Not that I'm aware.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, thank you. I was just, wanted to know, you know, how it was done before, so we could see if we could kind of glean anything, anything from that. As you know, we went ahead, we, we're on a 45-day deadline, so we went ahead and posted the position Tuesday, last Tuesday, was that right, Bob? Monday or Tuesday? Tuesday, okay. And so we made it public. You have to be a resident award to, our charter says it has to be the same political party, so that was Republican position, so that's one of the qualifications. You have to be a Republican to apply for this position. And so what we need to do is kind of work out the rest of the details on this. We have a meeting the 18th, not the last Monday of the month, which we usually do because that's on Memorial Day. And then we have, I think it's the 8th of June, is it the 8th of June meeting is? Okay. And I think the 14th, which is like a Sunday, is the, the last day. So what happens, and I think all of council knows this, but this is for the benefit of other people who don't, is that the town itself has 45, council has 45 days to vote and select a person to fill this position, and if not, then it goes to, is it the common, which court does it go to?
Court of Common Pleas.
The Court of Common Pleas, and they actually will make the decision. So I think we probably all like to settle it ourselves, you know, make, you know, make that choice here if we can, so. So we have to figure out the rest of this process. We need to figure out when we're going to close applications. I just, I would like to do public interviews of, of the candidates at, at a meeting, and then council will vote. Ideas, suggestions?
Madam President, this is Angela Woods. Just as far as the timeline goes, what, we have two meetings between now and before the deadline, right? So by our June 8th meeting, we need to vote to fill this position, right?
Well, they have to be sworn in, too.
Oh.
Yeah, so I, right, am I right, Gavin, on this?
Well, I mean, you'll, you'll vote, you'll make the appointment. The key is making the appointment within the 45 days.
Okay, all right.
That's what the charter requires.
We don't have to have the judge come and swear them in, then?
No, I mean, we, you know, we certainly can do that and have the judge plan on being at that meeting where the appointment's going to occur.
Okay.
But, but yeah, the charter...
I thought they had to be appointed and sworn in by the 15th, but okay.
Yeah, you should, you're safe as long as you get the appointment done.
Okay, okay. All right, go ahead, Angela, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. So I'm just trying to sort out the timeline in my head, so by, by June 8th, then for sure, we need to make the appointment, we need to vote at that meeting, no later, to fill the position. So your question was, how long should we receive applications? Is the pl-? Is the plan to interview, Councilwoman Powers, may I ask, do you know whether there were other candidates when you were appointed?
No, there were not.
Okay. I'm just curious if, if we need to interview everybody who's, who applies, or at another meeting, should we decide who we're going to interview? How's that going to look?
What I was thinking.
Go ahead, go ahead, Joanne.
I would think that we would have to interview as many people as apply. I mean, how can you make a decision if you haven't spoken to them or interviewed them?
So are we thinking do interviews on the 18th, since that's the last meeting we have till we'd have to vote?
I was thinking about.
I would think so.
I was thinking about closing out applications like Thursday at noon.
Okay, so then that's a four.
And then that gives us, you know, time to review the applications, you know, over the weekend, and then do interviews on the 18th. Yeah, so, yeah, that's what I'm thinking, too, Carolyn.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, Kim. I think that's a good idea. Yep. The Thursday, the Thursday before the 18th, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
That's this, that's, that's in three days.
Oh, oh, that's right, because that meeting's, oh, I'm sorry.
We're all mixed up. I'm still in April. Don't worry about it. We're all, nobody has any idea what day it is.
Okay, so we're heading Thursday.
But that gave us, but that's still, we've been advertising since Tuesday, so that's seven, eight, nine, so that's 10 days for advertising. That's pretty good.
Well, that's true, yes. It's been out there already, so it's not like we're just putting it out tomorrow.
Yeah.
Right, 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 right. So what do you all think? Do interviews on the 18th?
Yes.
I agree with you.
Works for me.
Okay. Right now, we have one applicant, so it's, if, you know, if we had like 30, we may have to say, hey, everybody rank your top three, and then do something like that, but that has not happened so far. If we had a big onslaught, I guess we could figure out, you know, rank them, but I'm not seeing that really as a problem. So if we, so we can do the interviews next meeting, right? Everybody think this?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes, I think so.
Okay, so we'll do the interviews then. And do you think we should wait to the, till June 8th, or? I'd really like to get somebody in place as soon as possible, I have to tell you. Do we want to wait and see how we feel on the 18th if we want to vote? And then if we go, oh, no, we need to think about it, then we can push it off till June, but kind of tentatively say we'd like to maybe vote on the 18th?
If that's possible, that would be, that would be good, because then we'd have it done.
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds like a plan.
Okay, all right, so.
Gavin, is that, is that possible?
Yeah, that's possible. That is possible, and I think, as everyone knows, and the council president has noted a couple of times, that this process, unlike a lot of appointments, are, is required to be entirely public. It is not subject to that executive session provision that allows you to discuss appointments of other types of officers or officials. So the way you are, the way you're setting, setting out to do it, I think, is perfectly okay.
Okay, good. So that we can make the decision on the 18th then, right?
Yeah, I would be fine with that. I think we'll probably know then, but if somebody says, you know what, I'm, or the majority of council says, you know what, I'm just not ready to decide, I need more time, that does give us another meeting, if we needed another meeting. In case we just, the competition was just so, such a strain.
Madam President, this is Angela Woods again. Just one more question. Do we know whether the person that we appointed to this position will take over all of Councilman Kirk's committees? Or do we have some, some room to make adjustments there?
Can you be more specific about what you're asking?
Yeah, as in, we're all liaisons to, or chairs of committees. Will the new councilperson for Ward Two just automatically step into Councilman Kirk's old positions in that regard?
I would probably want to talk to that person and see what their strengths were. If this was someone who was really good at one particular thing, and it would make really sense for them to do that, we could do some, we could do some trading, you know, we could, we could manipulate those. Anyone that has a committee that they are, you know, really want to hang on to, then, you know, I think that would be fine, too. But if you, or if you said, you know, Angela, hey, I would like the Santeria Authority, I'm like jazzed about the Santeria Authority, I would like to have that, and then the person who's coming on goes, I do not, Sandra, I see no problem with going, hey, Angela, you can take them. Is that the question?
That is the question, thank you.
All right, all right.
This is Chuck Mazur. Would it be possible to send out the resumes of the potential candidates so that we have some time to review that before the 18th meeting?
We'll, we'll do that after we get to the deadline on Thursday.
On Thursday.
Okay.
Okay, okay. All right, we've had one person apply so far. Don't say that already?
Yeah, we already, I thought we all got the applications, too, of that one person, the paperwork, I should say.
Yes, we did get it.
Okay.
Is that, yeah, is that Carolyn that said that?
Yeah.
Yeah, but there may be, maybe others.
Well, they're not. Well, if we get others, yeah.
Yeah, if we get others, we'll get them, yeah.
Okay, any other, anything, any other questions or comments, or did we miss anything? Gavin, did we miss anything on this decision here? If we did vote on the 18th, then we could see if, if the person could be sworn in on June and kind of get them in, because there's not a lot of the term left, so get them up and running as soon as possible would probably be good if, if that can work out, you know. Okay, all right, good. All right, the solicitor's heads nod, and that's a good sign. Anything else about this?
We, we can do this swearing in virtually, Gavin?
We'll figure, we'll figure that out. That's a good question. Now, that's what I have not thought about at all, but we'll find a way.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions or comments about this? Okay, is there any other new business that anyone has?
Hi, Madam President, this is Angela Woods. I have a question.
Sure.
With all the correspondence with the residents on Whitley, a couple additional topics came up. Many of them were about traffic concerns, which I passed on to Chief Hock and to Councilwoman Schwager. One in particular, and I would just like to get a little feedback from council on this. There's a resident on that road who mentioned pet waste in her yard, and I know that we have an ordinance requiring that you clean up after your pets. And I know that on the police portion of the website, there's a little reminder about that. This particular resident had an issue occurring, though, where the, someone was, was walking their dog very early in the morning, earlier than she could see the person and have a conversation with them. The yard was, pardon me, the, the dog was using her yard as a place to do its business, and the person was cleaning up after it, but there's some residual waste left and getting onto the lady's newspaper. I'm not looking for a new ordinance or anything like that, just wondering if there's, if you all have any ideas about how we could maybe remind residents just to be sensitive to that sort of situation, or maybe include it on the little blurb on the police part of the website? Any thoughts on that?
I think it'd be a good idea to put it on, put it on the website.
We just, we'll just do a reminder that people need to thoroughly clean up behind their pet.
Okay, I would appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other new business? So we need a motion to reconvene this meeting at 6:30 on May 18th, and that's for the interviews?
Correct.
Okay. But we also have to have executive session. What's the best way, Gavin, to do this? Just reconvene this meeting and then just have the, just make the statement, we're having an executive session, okay?
That's correct, yeah.
We do this different every time. Okay, so a motion to reconvene this meeting at 6:30 on May 18th. It's your motion.
Joanne Powers, so moved.
Second, Chuck Mazur.
Yeah, all right. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay, all right. Then the meeting will be reconvened at 6:30. Everyone, please stay put, because we are going to have our executive session meeting that we couldn't have before the meeting to discuss a litigation matter.
I am going to cut the recording and remove all of the non-council members at this point. So, do we need a motion to adjourn this council meeting? No, because we're doing the reconvene. Okay, recording is ending, then. Yeah.